I'm going to call us to order for the city council's study session for Monday, May 6, 2019. Our first order of business is an executive session for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110-1I. We anticipate -- it's got an hour on there. Do we have our city attorney here? Is Kim here? Is she back there?
Is she?
Ah, okay. Okay. Yeah, no, we are anticipating Kim being here tonight. I just want to make sure she's actually physically present.
Let's go take a look, shall we?
Yeah, somebody should probably take a look. Otherwise, we can just reverse the order or move it to tomorrow if we don't have a city attorney. Mr. Eastman says that our city attorney is here. I'm assuming he must have seen her. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. So it's got an hour gap on here. We're really anticipating an hour?
No. We can start with a half an hour if you'd like.
Okay. Well, let's do that. Let's do a half an hour, just so we're not -- and then we'll come back and extend if we need to. Okay. We are back and ready to go. Our topic of discussion this evening is an introduction to the traffic impact fee update project. I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Acting Mr. City Manager, Cheryl Paston, Acting Public Works Director. I am happy to introduce Stephanie Sullivan, who is our Associate Stormwater Engineer. We've actually brought her into the traffic side because we can't find anybody to help us out with our traffic engineering work. We're in the process of hiring somebody. But anyways, this is Stephanie's first presentation in front of you all. I know you'll give her your full attention to the update of our traffic impact fee. This is the first of several touchpoints that will be coming to you. So she will introduce her team from FCS. So thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Cheryl. So I am joined tonight by our consulting team from FCS Group for our traffic impact fee update. Next to me, I have Doug Gabbert, FCS Project Manager. And at the end is John Gilarducci, FCS President. So tonight, we're here to introduce the traffic impact fee update. And the goal of this update is to incorporate the 2020 to 2025 Transportation Improvement Program. And we will also look at revising code language to clarify how the city is implementing state So first, we'll provide you a project purpose and introduction. We'll then go over what is an impact fee and give us all a level playing field. And then next, we'll review the items. We are looking to you for specific feedback. So this presentation is organized by those four topics, which each generally have the state law, a description of the current code and how we address it, and finally, our recommendation for each item listed. I will then go over the next steps and have time for additional questions. So if we're all ready, I'll send it to John and Doug.
We're having some monitor difficulties up here. We're trying to get --
We'll watch the victory. We're good.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And the city attorney's seat, too. Try that computer.
Was yours plugged in this one?
Hmm?
Did you have to plug yours in?
No, I had to turn it on.
I had to turn it on.
I just wanted to --
And it's not just me. Tom can't turn his own. Those three? Maybe four. It might be this whole side. And you know what's funny? Because these things aren't charging properly either.
Something.
Power over here.
But we have the presentation on our iPads, so technically, we can kind of, I think, follow along.
You also have printed slides, maybe? Or oh, it's just on the iPads? Okay.
Or here, or the screen. We're good.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to John.
Thank you, Stephanie. So there are really three objectives to the whole project. We'll be focusing on that second major bullet tonight. But what we're doing as part of the project is we're updating the transportation impact fee to incorporate the adopted Transportation Improvement Program for 2020 through 2025, when it is adopted. We have a number of key policy issues that we've been discussing internally and would like to discuss with you tonight. They involve impact fee credits and some suggested changes to the code based on the statute. Impact fee exemptions, same thing. Impact fee indexing and impact fee expenditures, how the money gets spent. And then many months from now, we will be updating the transportation impact fee based on what will then be the adopted transportation master plan. That's much farther in the future. Tonight's the TIP. But we will be coming back after the transportation master plan, I think. So what is an impact fee? Very simply, an impact fee is a one-time fee paid at the time of development by new development. There are pages and pages of rules in the RCW. Some of the key language is shown here. Payment of money imposed upon development as a condition of development. The facilities that they're paying for a share of need to serve -- they need to be to serve that growth and development reasonably related to the new development. They cannot exceed a proportionate share of the cost of the facilities that growth will use. And we have to take many steps to make sure that doesn't happen. Some of the language that's not shown here but is elsewhere in the statute. The facilities that we base the impact fee calculation on have to be in an adopted capital facilities plan element of the comprehensive plan. So the Transportation Improvement Plan serves as that list of projects that we need to base the impact fee calculation on. When we talk about impact fees, although our focus in the project is on the transportation impact fee, these first few slides and the policies are more general. Impact fees are available for transportation, parks, schools, and fire. The city imposes both the transportation and a parks' impact fees, so some of these issues will impact both of those fees. Some more key language out of the statute. You see there in the second bullet, 8202050. We have to provide for a balance between impact fees and other sources of revenue. So we have to make sure that the project list is not being solely funded by impact fees. We have to account for other revenues that are available. And we have to make sure that if there are deficiencies to be corrected in that project list, we can't fund meeting the deficiencies from the impact fee. It's got to be about building the facilities that will serve new growth and not meeting deficiencies to serve existing customers. I mentioned a couple of these bullets. The system improvements must be reasonably related to the new development. And then skipping to the last one there, must reasonably benefit the new development. One of the, I think, key things we've learned from case law is we don't have to be directly benefiting or serving a new development with a specific improvement. It's fine that the general system, transportation system, is providing benefit to a new development. So it doesn't have to be at their doorstep for them to pay a proportionate share. This is a snapshot of some of your existing transportation impact fees. There's a much longer schedule and many more land uses which can be applied. But these are a few of the select fees which are common in the city of Summamish. You see a single-family house at a little over 14,200 per dwelling unit. An apartment impact fee is also imposed on a per-dwelling-unit basis, as you see there, a little over 8,700 per dwelling unit. You see charges for schools and a restaurant imposed on a square-footage basis. That is most common for commercial development, that it would be imposed per square foot of usable floor space at rates like you see there. The gas station is per fueling position. That's why that one's different.
Can I ask a quick question on there? I'm just curious, and this would be, I guess, for our city staff. Why the high school's impact fee per square foot is less than elementary and middle? I'm just trying to make sense of that in my head.
So, well, if you guys want to chime in, that's fine. But these rates are based on dozens and dozens of statistical -- of survey information gathered from cities all around the country. And so I can't tell you why it's lower, only that it's based on lots of empirical evidence. And what we've found anecdotally, because there's always questions about this, it's from this publication called the ITE Manual, which is the bible of trip generation, is that when called upon to do individual traffic studies, they often find that these numbers are supported, the trip generation. So that's as far as I can go on that one.
Good to know. I wasn't sure if it was specific to trip generation from Summamish.
It's not.
Specifically, okay, generally speaking. Okay.
So now we get into the general policy, the four general policy issues. And we begin with an easy one, which is impact fee credits. And so the situation here is you have a developer and you've asked that -- the city has asked that developer to build a piece of infrastructure that will serve more than just the development that is being developed. I should have said that better. But statute requires, and your code requires, credit toward impact fees to be given in that situation. Your provisions are consistent with statute. It's wonderful. We suggest that you add some language that clarifies the situation that both your current code and statute are silent on. Specifically, what happens when the thing that you ask the developer to build is so big and expensive, the amount of credit you owe that developer is greater than the impact fee that that developer is being asked to pay? What do you do? Well, right now, it's not clear from current language in code. What we suggest is that you specify in code, and we have put this in writing for staff, that you offer to provide credit, a paper credit, in excess of the impact fee that the developer can use in subsequent phases of the same development. You'll be happy to know that a lot of other cities, most of the ones that we looked at, are also silent on this issue as well. And those that do address it in ways that we're not comfortable with, because they limit the credits in ways that aren't supported by statute, because statute says if they build something, you have to give them full credit for it. And so that's why this language that we're suggesting will cover you on that front, and yet will still give you some control. You're not giving away too much. So we think this meets the law, but also keeps a lot of control with the city, if that makes sense.
It does. But I have a question. What if there aren't subsequent phases of a development? Then what?
Well, then, in that particular case, those credits would be like frequent flyer miles that expire worthless.
All righty.
So for policy reasons, it would not be unheard of that city councils have opted for a policy that is more generous than what we're suggesting. That is your choice, but we're suggesting you start there. Our next policy issue is a little tougher. So in your code, you have some exemptions to impact fees that are not consistent with statute. And this manifests in two different ways. In section SMC 14A15030 sub 1, I'm sure you have that memorized. You put together two things that don't really go together. You have low-income housing, and in the same sentence, you have development activities with broad public purposes, which, as this reads, really could be anything you want it to be, because I think you wanted that flexibility. Later on in that section, it says that shall be -- if you give a waiver in that situation, that impact fee shall be paid from public funds other than impact fee accounts if the waiver is greater than 80% of the impact fee. That phrase, "if the waiver is greater than 80% of the impact fee," by statute, it only applies to the low-income housing piece. That's not allowed on the broad public purposes part of it. So that's one change we suggest you make to be consistent with statute. The second one are the straight-up exemptions in the next subsection of your code, 030 sub 2. There are three exemptions. A, any development activity undertaken by the city. B, public schools. C, accessory dwelling units. Those are not supported by statute. And so we suggest you just completely repeal those. Statute actually does address what developments can be exempted from impact fees. And it's really specific. I don't know that I have it right in front of me. But statute is really specific on what is allowed to be exempted. If you have the issue paper number one on impact fee credits and exemptions, it is specified there. So we suggest --
I think it's right there. Low-income, broad public purposes. No. That's not it. Darn it. That's close. I'm seeing if I can find it here. I don't see it here. But in any case, so we suggest repealing those provisions to bring yourself in line with statute.
And I would add one thing. Repeal or clarify, I think, that the exemptions must be reimbursed from --
Absolutely. Yes.
You could keep the exemptions if you choose to, but you would have to clarify in the code that the funds would be reimbursed by non-impact fee sources.
I got a couple of questions up here. Deputy Mayor Moran.
So currently, it states that -- can we go back to the last slide? Currently, it states that the city public -- I'm just -- with the problems that we have with the roads around the schools, in particular, high schools, I'm very surprised that the past councils have chosen to exempt any sort of impact fees from school districts. So I'm just clarifying that that's currently what we do, but that can be up for discussion. Okay.
Okay. I think she was nodding her head.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Okay. So slightly different. So I think what I heard you say was that we can allow for these exemptions. We just have to specifically call out that basically the city would be funding those impact fees. Basically, it would be like a subsidy. And it would have to come from sources other than someone else's impact fees.
Exactly.
Is that --
So you can't make somebody pay a greater impact fee to pay for those that you don't want to charge. So don't do that.
Right.
But if you're willing to come up with the impact fee dollars from other city sources, yeah, then you can pretty much do whatever you want.
And is that true for the low-income housing as well?
You have more options there. There, you can make waivers that you don't have to reimburse.
And is it only low-income housing? Or does affordable housing also have options? Because those are two very different things.
You'd want to use the definition of low-income housing in statute, which is funny, because we were just talking about that a few minutes ago.
It's specifically low-income housing, and it has a very complicated definition of low-income housing. Housing with a monthly housing expense that is no greater than 30% of 80% of the median family income adjusted for family size for the county where the project is located, as reported by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So this would be easy to do. We don't have the numbers at our fingertips. But it does have a specific definition of what low-income housing is and what is eligible for --
30% of 80%? 30% of 80% of the household income?
Of -- The housing expense can be no greater than 24%, 30% of 80%, 24% of the median family income adjusted for family size for King County in this case.
So that does still sound like it's focused more on low income than affordable. So are there any potential exemptions for affordable housing or only for low income? Is that what you're saying?
Statute talks about low-income housing.
It does not talk about --
But we have them already currently for the town center, do we not? We do waive some impact fees currently in the town center for affordable housing, I believe.
Yeah, so I'm not asking if our code currently has it. I'm asking if it would be allowed to have something like that. And I think what you're saying is no.
What we're -- and let me qualify that a little bit, because what the statute provides for low-income housing is those exemptions without backfilling. We call it backfilling, backfilling it from another revenue source.
Okay.
So you can provide any number of other exemptions. We would encourage you to have a strong basis for doing that. But you should backfill those from other revenue sources.
Just like the schools or something like that.
Exactly.
My other question is about the city. So if we're building something, why would we even charge ourselves impact fees in the first place? Like, that seems fairly redundant and like we're going to spend a lot of money accounting for stuff that we're just passing monopoly money around, right? Like --
This comes up a lot in -- because these are, even though they're in the excise tax section of the statute, these are treated as rates. And you pay based on your impacts and uses and demands as opposed to who's paying generally. So that's why.
So this is really, again, about what the source of funding is. So we aren't jacking up the impact fees on other development to cover this.
That's right.
We can exempt the city building. We just have to fund it through some other source.
Which would be the city, probably. Yeah.
Right. Kind of my point. Back to my monopoly money. We spend a lot of money accounting for things. Okay, great.
But you're getting at, it really is an equity issue.
Yeah.
That is why we don't do that.
Understood. Thank you.
Before we leave this subject, because I am not one to let something go, unfortunately, I did find that statute that specifies what is allowed to be completely exempt. And here's what it says. This is RCW 8202090 sub 1. Two development activities that are explicitly exempt from impact fees. Number one, buildings or structures constructed by a regional transit authority. And number two, shelters for people who are homeless or victims of domestic violence.
Actually, that was in the packet somewhere.
Those are specifically exempted from impact fees in statute.
Okay. No more questions up here, so.
All right. Okay, so the next one. Now we're getting into the geeky weeds a little bit. Indexing. So the idea here is that you update your impact fees every few years, okay? But in between, costs are changing and typically going up. And it would be nice to have some way to deal with that without having to recalculate the whole impact fee every single year. So what we're suggesting, and what everybody's code seems to allow, but I'm not sure how many of them actually do it, is to have a practice of annual indexing. And this would be where you have a formula in place, and you use the latest data points from that formula to adjust the impact fees each year. So the underlying costs, you don't have to worry about those, because you're actually adjusting the fee itself. So we have a couple of suggestions here on the next slide that for the traffic impact fee, you use the Construction Cost Index, that's the CCI, from the Engineering News Record, that's the ENR. And there is a specific -- there's a number of geographically specific indices for that. And we would obviously suggest you use the one for Seattle. That is a proxy for capital costs. And that will be a good hedge against the cost of traffic-related projects. Now, for parks, and for the most part, we're talking about traffic here, but we were specifically asked to address this issue for parks as well. What we'd like to see you do is kind of divide your total impact fee cost basis into projects, you know, development of parks versus land acquisition. And come up with some percentage split for the life of however long that impact fee calculation is going to be good for, however many years. And for the portion of it that is related to capital construction, use the CCI just like you would for transportation. For the part related to land acquisition, use the House Price Index, that's the HPI, from the Federal Housing Finance Agency, which is the FHFA. They come up with, you could use quarterly index, monthly index. I'm suggesting the quarterly only purchase, the quarterly purchase-only index. For the Seattle-Bellevue-Kent area, which used to be the Seattle-Bellevue-Everett area, just for fun. But that will provide you a good index for underlying land values, and you will hedge your risk by indexing the fee to that. You can do that once a year. And depending on how you put it into your code, it's currently in your code. Did you know that you already have provisions for this in your code? But it is a city council action as it currently exists. You may choose to make this a staff, something that can be done administratively. Just as a fun point of trivia, a lot of cities do have some kind of indexing provision. And a lot of them use the Washington Department of Transportation Index, an index that has not been updated for two or three years now. So that's done. That's not really valid anymore. So this is a good time to make this change and to use these indices.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. So interestingly, at least for the city of Summamish, a lot of our road projects require land acquisition as well. But I'm assuming it would be difficult, if not impossible, to assess some part of the traffic impact fees or transportation impact fees to that land acquisition index. And I'm just guessing, not having looked these up, that that index is going up faster than the other one in this area.
Well, it's more volatile. That is for sure. It is much more volatile. There will be years when it goes down.
Right.
So if you commit to using it, just know that that happens.
Okay.
Now, to address your question, that's a very interesting point. So let me give you two things to think about there. Number one, the land that you're acquiring, are you buying that land? Or is it being exacted? If it's just being exacted, then you wouldn't really -- if there's no cash outlay, then there's really nothing to hedge.
Oh, we outlay cash.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So in light of that, if that is the case, then you may want to have, maybe it's in your tip, maybe it's someplace else, make that information transparent about what is land-related costs versus construction costs. And that could facilitate a very Parks-like breakdown.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, just for clarification on the application of the parks example, using two indices. So upfront, you're doing some type of historical analysis of land versus capital costs. And then from that, you're deriving an impact fee, say $5 for capital and $2 for land. And then you're applying those, each of those indices. One, this HPI for land and the -- for land and the CCI for capital. So it's a one-time calculation of the split.
Yes.
And then, from, once you've established the split in your table, then you're escalating those amounts, those factors. You don't redo the split along the way.
Exactly.
You establish it upfront.
That's right.
It's a weighted, and then the weighted average percentage is applied every year.
The split travels with the TIF calculation.
Very good. Thank you.
Or PIF.
I have one last question. So did I hear you had to say that it's already in our code?
Yeah.
That we can do indexing?
Yes, but as a city council action.
But we don't do that, or at least not to my recollection, or have we?
For a few years.
Okay. Did I see 2016 somewhere in there? So it's been since 2016, since we last suggested our impact fee by indexing. Is that correct?
That's our understanding.
Okay. Yes, we do. Okay. Councilmember Ross, did you have anything else?
And by the way, just because it's in there, it doesn't, if it is a city council action, then the city council doesn't have to do it.
Right.
And so I think, and so I've had this happen with other jurisdictions. They can consciously pass in a year. However, if you do that, I would say, in order to stay in the spirit of indexing, no catching up in future years.
Sure, sure.
Each year, it's either one year of movement or nothing.
Right. I like your idea, however, about it being administrative rather than council action, because then it's something that can be done every year by staff and doesn't have to come to council.
Mayor, if I can just clarify, I'm not sure if 2016 was the last year. If you can go back a slide, the 2016 refers to the current index that we could have used was discontinued in 2016.
Gotcha. So when was the last time we adjusted our impact fee?
Erin...
Before that?
It's probably been a while.
Okay. 14, the audience.
Sounds like 2014, roughly.
So it's been a while. Okay. Well, yeah, if staff can just take note. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about it being an administrative procedure rather than a council action. That seems to be pretty easy.
So we want to leave you on a happy note here. So the law requires that impact fees be earmarked in a particular account and kind of be walled off for their purposes. We want to bring some clarity to what that means, because the city has a practice right now that we believe, and we've gotten an attorney opinion to concur with this, that the city is a little excessively strict in how they use their impact fee money. So when the statute requires for impact fees to be earmarked, what that means is earmarked as in segregated from non-impact fee revenue sources. You can't, you can't, you have to spend them in certain ways because they're impact fees, and so you want them off in their own accounts. What current practice has been, has been to tie impact fee revenue to particular projects on the list in effect when the revenue was earned. We find this excessively restrictive, and in theory, we could come up with some scenarios where that leads to perverse outcomes and stranded money, which is something that we don't believe the statute at all requires. So what we'd like, the way we'd like you to think about this is, the only list that matters is the current list. And so you are required to spend impact fees in conformance with the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. That means the current capital facilities element of the current comprehensive plan, with no dignity given to what was on the list before. So if it's on the current list, you can spend whatever impact fee revenues you have on that current list, even if those impact fees were collected in a time where the list was different. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes.
That loosens you up a little bit from your current practice, but in a way that we think is completely consistent with statute and fine.
Councilmember Stewart.
Mr. Acting City Manager and Mr. Finance Director. So what, you should have a hat. So when we ask you a question, we know what hat you're wearing there. So would this require a change in policy, or is this just a change in practice by someone with the appropriate authority to do so? It's just a change in practice? Is that what you were... Sorry, we...
Oh, are you addressing that question?
Yes, I was.
Yes, the latter.
Okay.
Your code is fine on this.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay. No, I asked that question today.
Yeah, there's administrative challenges, because we actually have requirements to track by deposit, which is tracking interest-bearing accounts. So as the project lists change and those move, you're tracking when a deposit is received. So there's a time element here that goes on that makes it a bit of an administrative challenge. And several years back, the State Auditor's Office made this one of their special areas of emphasis in tracking those administrative spreadsheets that track those deposits. So that's likely where the, I'll use your words, overly restrictive process was developed to justify those deposits being received and how they were tracked with interest until they were expended on an appropriate project. So that was what created the process that's in place and how our current reporting relationship works. So adding this flexibility would allow for an expansion of that process that we currently have in place.
And do we have any fees that are getting close to expiring? I'm assuming no, but...
Not since we went to 10 years. I think the requirement was previously, way back, six years.
Six.
And so that changed to 10, and really, we don't, since that period of time, we haven't gone 10 years.
Councilmember Hornish.
So I'm a little confused. You say we have this in our code right now to where we can use it on any project in the tip, because it doesn't make sense. In the bill, it says the Issaquah Falls City project will not be eligible for impact fees if we don't change it. So that means that we can't use all the impact fees that we have now if the Issaquah Falls City is on the tip. So you said one thing, and then you answered a question that really confused me that was just the opposite, I thought.
So I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. When I said your code is fine, what I meant was, this restrictive practice is not codified in your code. I did not mean to imply that your code at all addresses this, because it doesn't. Does that help?
Oh, okay. It's not the code. Okay, I hear what you're saying. That helps.
Okay.
Thank you. We're interpreting it with that restriction, but we don't have the restriction in the code.
Right.
Exactly. And it's... And for what it's worth, it's perfectly understandable that you're doing this, because the statute...
We got a lot of sidebar conversations going on.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's fine, but we've got conversations over here, here, and you're talking. So I just want to make sure that we give you the floor here.
I can wait. Well, I was just going to say that, in the city's defense, you know, the statute is very difficult to, it's silent on this issue. It's very understandable how you would make a reading, as was made, and create these buckets, basically, based on the lists at the time. We've just said, in part based on what we've seen practiced in other cities and in discussions with the city attorney, that restriction is unneeded. But it's, again, perfectly understandable why it's been done this way.
Councilmember Ritchie.
More to Councilmember Hornish's point, does that restriction, self-imposed restriction, inhibit us from utilizing funds for specific road projects that are currently on our tip?
It could.
Yeah, I can't answer specifically whether it does. That has, you'd have to look at your accounting for that.
Looking at my accounting.
But the code doesn't prevent it, right?
Well, that's, but if it doesn't prevent it, why are we, I mean, are we missing out on money here?
Yeah.
Is that what's going on? Is that what you're asking?
It is.
So state law also requires annual reporting on all impact fee receipts and what projects we apply those to. So you get that annually. You'll get another one here shortly, once we close out 2018. So it shows all the impact fee deposits, the interest that they've accrued, and what projects they would be eligible to be spent on. So there is a time element, which is, the tip is forward-thinking. Deposits are current receipts. So you're taking in those deposits, and what's on the list currently as eligible, that's where those impact fees would be applied if the projects are built. If they're not done, then you're not applying those impact fee deposits, and they remain in balance. That's what the annual reports reflect, is how much we've collected and remain in balance. TIP, as a forward-thinking document going six years into the future, defines what projects you could use impact fee money on moving forward. So at a single point in time, you'll take balance received from the past. This is loosening up that requirement and saying, you don't have to just spend it on the projects in the past. You can also spend it on your adopted tip that you're going to define six years into the future, and use those, that balance of those impact fees on those future projects.
I think we want to do that.
Yeah. So that's what it's loosening up to allow.
Yeah, I think that's what we're attempting to do here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hornish.
So is that an issue with the transition from going from our current practice to codifying what we want to do to apply it to anything on the tip, on the current tip? I mean, because you're saying, because we have some impact fees that we've put a list on with the current tip at the time, we can't then pull those out and applying to something else new on the tip?
So making this change would allow that to occur.
But you're saying with the impact fees that we have balance right now, we can't, because we've already allocated that to that list at the time in a practice?
That's how we currently account for it, is we look at the tip that's currently adopted, and we identify a project in that tip to apply those impact fees if that project takes place. We're applying the impact fees received to that project.
But that's still not answering my question. If we did that in the past and we change it, can we then pull that money out that was recovered eight years ago and apply it to something new?
Yes.
Yes.
And we could do that without changing the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's not that we can't, it's just that we haven't been.
Okay, so we could do that. Okay, that's what I, okay. And there would be no transition then. That was my question.
That's correct.
All right, all right.
Okay.
Pending no further comments on those topics, coming up, we will be taking your feedback, and if you have any additional questions, we'll be happy to answer those. And wrapping this into the code amendments to bring to you to a regular meeting on June 4. And then we'll be looking at a council to adopt the resolution for the 2020-2025 TIP update, which will enable us to calculate the updated fee that would go along with the code amendment update. And finally, we would be holding a public hearing and adopting the TIF code amendments, including that fee, late June, early July or so. So with that, are there any other comments or questions that we could answer?
Councilmember Hornish, is your light still on?
Yes, I actually do have comments, and I'm not done with questions, sorry. So you had four things, and just to give to feedback on where I'm thinking, I like your ideas in general. To the next phase, and then it goes away for the first one, for excess credits. I think that makes sense. I'm still struggling a little bit with the exemptions. I'm not sure I fully grasped that whole concept, but it kind of makes sense. Indexing, I am appalled that we don't do that, frankly. So to make it administrative, that only makes sense to me. Couple of questions and clarifications. One thing, the ITE, John, I think it is, that you mentioned?
Yes.
That's on a national basis, right?
That's right.
There is no local, Washington, or regional, just to clarify that.
That's right.
Now, here is a 64, it might literally be a $64 million question. What is our general practice if we were allocating something only on the tip, if the tip had a project with, that was unfunded?
What do you mean when you say unfunded?
We have a big goose egg on the dollars, but the project is listed on the tip.
So to take you, I don't know if that question was to me, but I'm taking the bull by the horns.
Answer it.
So if the project is $0, it's going to, it will be on the list at $0 of eligible TIF money?
No, but that, not that the cost is zero, the funding is zero.
Right, the funding is zero.
The cost, there's a dollar figure for the cost.
No, there isn't.
Correct?
I got you.
You're saying...
Yes, because it says future years. At the very end of the tip, it does say future years, and it gives a dollar figure.
But it's not on the six-year tip.
But the six years says 00000.
Yeah, so that could be a problem.
We have a problem then.
Because, because your intuition is, we're going off of those six years of cost, and that intuition is right.
But it's six years, but we have 10 years to use it. So I'm not sure that computes or comports either, right?
That's a totally fair statement. I will tell you that there is nothing in law that says you have to go with a six-year project list. So that, the span of time for your list is whatever works for the city, and whatever you put in, whatever you can do to meet the requirement of having these projects in a capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan.
So future years would then potentially qualify, because it's on there.
Yes.
So there's a dollar figure on there, yeah.
It would, I guess, suggest at the time you do know a cost, then, update the TIF, you know, get it adopted as part of the tip at that time. You could, you could spend money on it. You could spend collected impact fees on that project now that it's on the list, but your TIF would be underfunded, basically. So you, but, but, but you would be legal spending money on that project. Certainly, you would want to update the TIF at the time you had that cost, so it would go up appropriately.
So we should be showing a cost, but knowing that it's not reasonably funded, because we need to collect the impact fees over the six years or whatever? Or that could be one funding mechanism.
If, yeah, and ideally, you know, you have a plan or a source that will fully fund that project, but the impact fee portion of it can be on, can be in the impact fee.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
Yeah, or it will never get funded.
What is very practically helpful about the six-year tip is that you, is the clarity of the six years. You have six years of project costs, which then correspond to six years of estimated growth. There is nothing wrong with using all of the future costs as well, but it would be helpful to quantify that future in terms of time. I mean, how many, how many years are there in a future? So you'd want to put some numbers to that, and then we could, once again, have a consistency between years and costs.
Yeah, that's critical.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Okay.
Councilmember Ross is going for his button.
So the tip is six years. Does it make any sense to add four years just to map out the funding profile, because it better align to the TIF?
It's more work.
It's entirely up to you guys.
Things change.
At this, you know, that might be something we would certainly look at for next year, for this year, since we have to adopt the tip by the end of June. Not sure we have enough time to develop the cost estimates, you know, for the additional four years, four years out. But certainly, it's something we can, we can do, if that's the council's pleasure.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the idea of kind of having that clarity, because we collect money and we have 10 years to spend it. But it seems to me, even in just the year and a half that I've been here, that things change. Things change a lot, and costs change. So having a detailed plan for six years and then putting everything else in that future, if we wanted to specify the future is seven through 10, that's fine, but I don't know that it's worth the extra work to try to figure out exactly when those years would fall, because we're constantly making changes. That something got delayed, we didn't start it this year, we had to move something around because some other thing happened, and I just don't know that that level of specificity is worth the extra effort that it would take, given the dynamic nature of these projects, at least at this point in time.
And I guess I would defer to Erin. I don't believe we've ever been in danger of not spending, you know, the TIF's up till now, so.
Nope.
Yeah.
My understanding is there's some caveats even with 10 years, isn't there, with the use of impact fees within that decade?
That it has to be returned?
No, I think there's some caveats. I remember having a conversation with John Cunningham about if it's on your tip, then...
Encumbered, is the word encumbered is used there.
I have one additional question as it pertains to how we, you know, are calculating our impact fee based on the tip, and it's, kind of goes hand... And it's kind of goes hand in hand with where Councilmember Hornish was going when he asked about a particular project, which has zeros across the board and hasn't what I would classify to be a pretty old figure there. So even though we're capturing it on our tip, if the dollar figure there is way underestimated, because we haven't looked at the project in a while, we're actually doing ourselves a disservice for calculating an impact fee if we don't have the true cost of the project on our tip. Is that fair? So it would be, who of the city then to take a look at that cost for those projects and make sure they're in today's dollars and not, you know, three, four, five years ago, so that we're able to actually calculate our TIF in a more accurate manner?
Councilmember Stewart.
Sorry, I do have a question about the indexing. Is there a particular timing we need to look at to be able to start doing that, or is that something we could take action on at our next meeting, like tomorrow? I mean, it just seems like something that the sooner we can do it, the better, but I assume that there's probably more to it than just waving our hand and making it so.
Oh, I'm going to do this. So, so I'm just, I'm going to give it to you from the technical side. The indexing, it doesn't matter when you start, you just want to make sure that you're going back to the same annual observation of the index each year.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter how you start, you just have to be consistent once you do start.
And, or we could like start now, and then we could do like a one-time offset, if we said we wanted to really start them on July 1st, or January 1st, or whatever that is, we could say, we're going to implement something now, we'll update it every X date going forward, and then change that index at that point. We could probably do it something like that, right? I mean, I see one head nodding there, so.
Yeah, you could make the effective date January 1st.
Right.
And subsequent January 1st. Now, the impact fees that we bring to you based on the tip will be in current costs, so what you would want to do is deal with the, you know, set the indexing for those at some point in time in the future.
In the future.
And then subsequent years.
Okay, so we can probably wait to do anything right now, because we're going to get new ones that we're going to, when we adopt these new ones, what would the timing of that be? Would that be immediate, or would that be starting on some future date?
That will be up to you, when those new fees are effective?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That will be up to you.
So we could decide on an indexing at that point in time, if those new impact fees, if we decided that they were going to be adopted at a future date, we could impose some sort of indexing on the current ones, and then update everything on some-
Subsequent year.
Okay.
If you're talking about a new impact fee, then yes, we would suggest one year after you implement it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more questions.
All right.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation, and I think that's all we have for the evening.
Excellent.
Very good. Thank you all.